Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. We have a board member that is on the phone tonight, so I need to read his statement. "A governmental body may conduct a meeting by electronic means only in the circumstances where such a meeting in person is impossible or impractical, and only if the governmental body provides public access to the conversation of the meeting to the extent reasonably possible. The place of the meeting is the place from which the communication originates, and the minutes of the meeting shall include a statement explaining why the meeting in person was impossible or impractical as pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21. A. This meeting is being held by electronic means due to personal reasons." All right. Item B on the agenda is our consent agenda. I want to just share with you all, everyone in front at the board table has a new HR report, and I think there are some available for people visiting in the audience today. We'll have the amended copy online, so you'll be able to see it through our district website. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to public comment, we have Mr. Sid Morris joining us this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come this evening. I have a couple of things I'd like to address tonight and give you feedback from what I hear in the community and that sort of thing. And one of the first things I want to say is, thank you for coming here so that you can be televised. I can tell you seniors appreciate that very, very much. And anyway, even though I'm not quite senior yet. But anyway, I hear by a lot of people, they appreciate having you here where they can watch it. And on behalf of them that have talked to me, several of them have, I want to say thank you for, thank you board, and thank the administration for that happening. Also, two meetings ago, I watched the budget presentation by Doug Neffker, and I spent 36 years in management, and I want to tell you that that was one of the finest budget presentations that I have seen for a long, long time. And although I never quite got involved like he does with the budget, I just want you to know that the public has mentioned that several times, explaining why some taxes are cut, some taxes increase, and the plan for it. That really rang in the community, and I had several people who were very positive about that. Mr. Neffker, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, thank you. Anyway, I could say more, but I know that I was allowed two minutes. That's the other day at the event out in Cedar Falls, they said Sid, two and a half minutes, so that'll be. They call me two and a half now. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going home to watch it.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on to item D on the agenda, the secretary's financial report. Our esteemed Mr. Neffker.
Well, I don't know how to follow that, and I will say that this month's financial report maybe hasn't been quite as entertaining as the last one. But if you want to pull it up on the screen, Janelle, we'll walk through the financials for the month of April. And you can see there in front of you the general fund. We had revenue for the month of $10,605,000. That is quite a bit larger than normal, but the district received its second half property tax draw for the 2016-17 school year, so that's why that number is as large as it is. Expenditures for the month were $3.86 million, so we had an ending balance of $12,264,739. If we, management fund, again, management fund is a completely property tax levy, and we received our second half property tax draw in April. And so we had a balance, revenue, excuse me, of $207,505, and expenditures of just $47,88. So we have an ending balance of $890,313, and you can see that's slightly less than where we were one year ago. Capital projects fund, again, this is our new fund that accounts for the bond sale that the board held this spring. Revenue, that $11,000 amount, you see, that's all interest. From now on, you will see revenue that will just strictly be interest that we're earning every month. And then expenditures primarily for the older elementary project, $298,000. So you can see our ending fund balance of $31.66 million, and you can also see at the bottom what we have in cash and where we have our dollars invested. Statewide one cent sales tax, revenue for $345,900 for the month. There you can see our expenditures, just under $20,300 for regular expenditures, and then the transfer for the debt service payment within ending balance, then of $6,722,358. And that is down from $9 million where it was a year ago, but obviously, we're working in construction projects, and we used some of those dollars when we did a refinancing last fall. And then also on the right, you can see what is restricted and what is unrestricted of that $6.722 million. Physical plant and equipment levy, again, primarily a property tax levy, and we had our second half property tax draw, so we had revenue of $1,344,000, just a little lower, under $26,000 for expenditures for the month, so our ending balance is $4.54 million. Debt service fund, again, you see that transfer coming in from Fund 33, that $272,000 plus $870 in interest, no expenditures, so we have an ending balance of $2.24 million, excuse me. And again, that'll all be paid in June when we make our second half year debt service payment, which is due June 1st. Student activity, relatively normal month, $55,380 in, $51,512 out. You can see our ending fund balance of $574,952, which is very similar to where it was one year ago. Trust and agency account, again, pretty normal month with $10,353 in, $13,641 out for an ending balance of $242,879. Food service, it's pretty normal again for them folks for the month of April with $231 in, $215,000 out for an ending balance of $672,400. The coffee shop, a little activity there, you can see they have an ending balance of $8,200. And in our River Hills Consortium, we had no activity this month, and so nothing changed, and then we have a zero balance in that account. And just a reminder, that is a flow-through account as the district is a fiscal agent for the 30 schools in northeast and central Iowa that are part of the River Hills Consortium. And with that, I would entertain any questions from the board.
Any questions for Doug? Pretty straightforward. All right, then we'll place the secretary's financial report on file for audit. Thank you. Moving on to communications, the student board representative, Julie Jorgensen.
Hello, everyone. It's been a while. I've been here. Yeah, sorry I couldn't make it. Last time, we had our all-city orchestra concert, so I was busy, you know, playing in that, which was very fun, so. But now I'm back, so it's all good. Okay. So we've probably been repeating a lot of the same things, but since the year is kind of dying down, we're just kind of waiting for things to come along. So for Student Senate, our blood drive is finally coming around this Friday. We are very excited to help with this cause and be a part of this great deal that we're doing. Next Wednesday will be our staff appreciation breakfast, and we are very excited to host that as well. And the 2017-2018 student body elections are in full swing. We are very excited to pass the baton down to the newest Student Senate Board Representatives and hopefully our new representative here. So that's really exciting and excited to show them all we have doing here. It's very fun. I love it. Through the school, tomorrow is our senior awards night. This is a pretty big deal. The purpose of this evening is to award and honor the seniors and their academic accomplishments and scholarships and all they've accomplished this year. I'm very excited to help present tomorrow night as well as just be there and be with all my friends and everyone in the senior class and just really celebrate all that we've accomplished this year. Prom will be this Saturday. I almost said June 13th. Wow. It'll be May 13th, not in June. It'll be at Electric Park Ballroom. We want to give a huge shout-out to junior leadership for making this possible without their help and dedication. We would not have prom, so we are very happy that we have that opportunity. Large group orchestra band and choir had their contests this past weekend. I would just like to say congrats to everyone who competed in that. We received a lot of Division Ones through all three groups, which is a pretty big deal, which is like the number-one spot. So good job to everyone who did that. This week, and I believe this is the final week of AP testing, just wishing good luck to all the students who are taking those tests. I am not one of them, but I am just, good luck to everyone, and I wish them the best as they get their scores back and, you know, prepare for those. And also, I believe it was last week or the week before, I don't remember, they're all meshing together at this point, the Drake Relays happened. And I would like to give a huge shout-out to Sam Schillender. He is an incredible runner, incredible athlete, and he won the two-mile race for the entire state, or the entire Drake Relay with a time of nine minutes and six seconds. So that's incredibly fast. I wish I could run that fast. And I would just like to congratulate all the runners who ran. It's a really big deal. And yeah, that's all I have this week. Does anyone have questions for me?
Julie, will you stay there?
Okay. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my gosh. Wait. Is this, wait, is this?
Because this is your.
I thought we had one more.
We do, but we always like to give it kind of ahead of time, that way you have it and employ it.
Sweet.
And it reads, it says, "This certificate is awarded to Julie Jorgensen in grateful, don't, we won't cry, in grateful appreciation and recognition for your faithful service as student member of the Cedar Falls Board of Education by the Cedar Falls Community Schools." So I'd like to give this to you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, and we have just been so fortunate. We started out with Drew Stensland.
Yes.
And then Michael Filancia, and now Julie Jorgensen. And you all have set the bar higher every time. And you were really our first student that was on TV, so. You're part of this journey.
Yes, thank you so much for having me.
And you are going to go to?
The University of Kansas to study communications and business.
All right. Well, we wish you the best of luck, and we expect you to stay in touch.
Yes, for sure.
And we do want you, and we do want you back next week, or in two weeks.
Twenty seconds. I was off. I was off.
Yes, for sure. I'll be, thank you so much.
The other item that we have underneath communications is actually for me to say thank you, especially from Iowa Association of School Boards as well. At each of the board members' location is a certificate to say thank you for what you do for not only our students, but certainly your advocacy for students across the state of Iowa's board members. It's greatly appreciated. I think a lot of people don't fully understand that this is a volunteer board. You give of your own free time to certainly focus on educational needs and how do we help improve education for all of our kids. And for that, I want to say thank you. May is the Iowa Association of School Boards Board Appreciation Month, and certainly we hope and encourage everybody to reach out and say thank you. Thank you for your service, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Moving on to approval of the 2017-2018 student fees. Mr. Conrad and Mr. Neffker. Did I skip something?
My part in this will be really short.
Well, it has your name on here.
I know it does. And usually when I get involved is when we start talking about maybe some proposed increases in some of our textbook fees or our activity fees and those kind of things, and we are not proposing any increases in those for next year, which would be four years, I think, in a row that we've kept those textbook fees at the same rate. But we do analyze that. Doug does a good job every year of analyzing the, our fees versus other fees, not only in our area, but around our conference and schools across the state. And so at this point in time, we feel we're in pretty good shape with our textbook fees, our towel fees, our instrument fees, and our activity fees. So I'll let Doug talk a little bit about transportation and food service.
Well, as Dan said, we're not recommending a change in our textbook fees or towel fee for next year, or as well as the instrument rent or activity passes. The other two items would be transportation fees and our food service fees. Now, the transportation fees are developed on a formula. The district started that formula quite a number of years ago, and that's based completely on what our annual transportation report is. So the fees that were increased that we're requesting for the 2017-18 school year basically ties back to our actual cost of operate the bus fleet for the 2015-16 school year. So we run a little bit behind on that. And that is not a 100% coverage. It's more on about a 75% coverage. It actually costs us more than, they recommended $46 per month to transport one student on a school bus, but what we do is we take the actual amount, and it's usually by about 75%.
Doug, would you refresh our memory? Do we bus students at a one mile and two miles, and where is the age break?
Sure, I'd be more than glad to do that. By law, the state of Iowa says that any high school student, which is, we do not need to transport them if they live within three miles of the school district. For junior high students, it's two miles, and for elementary students, it's also two miles. But in this school district, there's also an additional statement in the board policy that talks about that may be reduced by the administration in the event of traffic or other safety concerns for those youngsters to be able to walk to and from school. So in our case, we generally abide by the one-mile rule for that. And so what that means is if a student lives inside, an elementary student lives inside the one-mile circle, two-mile circles for junior high, or three-mile circle for the high school, they can opt or request to ride the school bus. And if there is room on the school bus, and that sometimes it becomes a problem, especially with our elementary students, then we would allow them to ride the bus, and then they would, parents would pay a fee as you see it on the screen.
Okay.
So that's how it works. Kids can also purchase a single-day pass if they need to do that. So if they normally don't ride the bus, but say they're going to a friend's house for some sort of an event after school or in the morning, they can do that, and you can see that we ask for $1.25 for that. We're not requesting a change in that amount, but the other three amount, or four amounts, excuse me, that you see on the screen, and we are requesting for a full month, it would be a $2 a month increase. For the months of December and March, it would be a $1 a month increase. And of course, if it's a one-way pass, which we sell quite a few of those actually, then that would be half of that. The other part of it is the food service for next year, as again, we're required by USDA to meet a certain threshold as to the cost of a full-price meal needs to equal the cost of the full-price meal plus the federal reimbursement that we receive. That has to equal the price of a free meal federal reimbursement rate. The district has been slowly working towards that goal. Every school in across the nation is working towards that goal. The minimum amount to raise is 10 cents a year, and so that's all we're asking for is the minimum, so as we march towards meeting that goal. Otherwise, you'll see that we're not really asking for any other changes, and we would recommend approval as staff is getting ready to send information to parents for next school year.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the increase in student fees?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Yes, Jeff?
First of all, I think it's great if we can hold, I mean, much as we can hold fees down, that's, I mean, good job. How is the advent of everyone carrying around electronic devices as far as actually our, so the question is, I mean, I understand like at a college level, my kids aren't in college yet, so I can't speak firsthand, but that, you know, the days of actually giving kids textbooks at the college level is quickly going away, and everything's online. So are we seeing more and more textbooks that are becoming electronic? And I would assume that should help us as far as on a cost standpoint?
Well, it does help a little bit, but, and we are seeing more and more of our, especially at the secondary level, electronic textbooks or resources that we're accessing, or students can access through the internet as opposed to giving them a paper textbook. But as you know, textbook companies are going to make their money. So they tell us that the cost of a textbook is not so much related to the printing of the textbook as it is to creating the textbook. And so it's usually payment for the people who author the textbooks or what make it so, them so expensive. So even though you would think that the cost of those books would go down quite a bit, we aren't seeing a drastic decrease in those costs. What it does prove are an opportunity for us to get upgrades or updates to those textbooks on a yearly basis, as opposing to having a book that probably we hold on to for seven years or longer, and then it's out, you know, it's way out of date by that time. So we usually get updates every single year on the subscriptions that we have for electronic textbooks.
Also, the electronic textbooks, they put things in to force you to continue to pay money.
Yeah, that's true.
It is true.
Do we have many staff members who are utilizing all the open-source material out there and creating their own materials rather than us having to rely on textbooks?
Yeah, more and more, especially with our movement towards learning-based grading and creating our essential learnings. Really, when we're looking for textbook resources or just learning resources, we're basing those on the skills we want students to learn. And as you know, a textbook is going to basically be following some curriculum probably out in California that was developed, and then they sell you that particular textbook. So really, our teachers are spending a lot more time looking for resources that will fit the needs of what they want students to learn in those classes. So they may have multiple resources that they're using as opposed to one textbook. Some of your more traditional classes in math, especially with algebra and Algebra II, we're not seeing as much of that. But in a lot of our other curricular areas, the need to actually buy, you know, 400 textbooks is really virtually not there anymore.
So what, I'm trying to think of how to, based on that comment that not everybody uses textbooks, what percentage of, like at secondary, are using electronic versus textbooks, or how many, you know, what's kind of the split? Are we down to 50-50 paper or electronic?
It wouldn't quite be 50-50 yet. I would imagine that, I would say my daughter this year as a senior in high school, I think she had three classes that she took this year that did not have an actual textbook. And so some of the more traditional ones, your AP classes and so forth, still have some of those things that they use. But basically, I think we're seeing a few more every single year jump on board where they're looking at, how can we look for resources as opposed to textbooks?
Good questions. Any other questions?
One more quick question. We talked about with the changes on University Avenue, that for Pete Junior High, we were doing some busing. Is that correct? For, I don't know what the spans was. Obviously, those parents are, that is a free busing to them because we've made this, we've extended this to them. Is that correct?
That would be correct. There was a designated area south of University Avenue between Main Street and roughly College Square Mall, roughly, that we had sort of designated that we would waive the fee until the completion of University Avenue.
So will that be, that section seems completed. Will we still be offering that for next year, or do we know yet?
It's not completed yet, and I'm not going to count any chickens before they're hatched. So we'll see what happens in the fall.
Yep, and we'll make sure we inform all those parents. And we have the ability to kind of designate areas that we consider either, A, kind of unsafe walking zones, could be sidewalks, could be busy roads, and that is an area that we just designated to ensure busing happened as that construction was being undertaken.
Great. Good questions. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
I'd like to say one more comment. It's not necessarily fee-related, but it's kind of fee-related. As most of you know, we kind of brought in-house the distribution of senior activity passes this year. Up until this past year, it had been done through the Cedar Falls Rec Department.
Golden age, right?
The golden age. Senior citizens, well, I'm there almost, so. And so when we did that, we've seen a real nice, healthy increase in the number of our senior citizens that are gaining those passes. In talking with Gary Koonen last week, I think almost 200 passes were distributed out this year. So that's a real good opportunity for our elderly, and like in my case, in a couple of years, me, we'll have an opportunity to attend all of our activities free of charge.
And those do not need renewed?
No.
Correct? Those are good, good to go.
And where can they get one of those? They go to the stop at the Cedar Falls High School office.
Thank you, Dan. Good stuff. Okay, moving on to item G, the approval of the food service equipment bid.
I guess that would be me again, if we want to pop that up on the screen, Janelle. This is our annual request for equipment for the food service program. We sent bids out, and you have that rather lengthy, thick packet of information in your board packet. And what I've tried to do here on the screen to summarize it, what we do is we go through all the bids that are received, and we sort of pick the most cost-effective bid or the lowest bid from every bidder, and we come down the line and we total up. So you can see our recommendation tonight is, with the breakdown, is to accept quotes totaling a little over $8,300 from Martin Brothers in Cedar Falls. And you can see it's primarily miscellaneous items, but there is one piece of equipment, and that's to replace a convection oven at the high school that is on its last legs. And that convection oven is $6,925 of that $8,300 total. Rapids Wholesale from Marion received the largest amount of the bid quotes this year at a little over, or excuse me, just under $69,000. A lot of miscellaneous items, but there are a couple of very large items. The dishwasher at the high school, or excuse me, at Pete Junior High School needs to be replaced. We've been literally patching that thing together with just about anything you can imagine this last year to keep it going, and it's a little over $40,000 for that. And then as well as a skillet braising pan, and that will replace the existing steam kettle which was purchased in 1963. So we can't get parts for it anymore, and so it's time that we swap things out. The food service staff tell me that the braising skillet pan, they can do almost everything that they can do with the steam kettle at about 40% of the cost of a new steam kettle.
And I would say, you know, when we look at replacing a dishwasher, that's just not the same of going to maybe a big box store to pick up a dishwasher for your kitchen. It's significantly different, larger, and has to be industrial in nature. So that's obviously a bidding process, and that is the lowest bid, which is a reasonable bid.
Because we run full racks of student lunch trays through at a time, and it's quite a bit different than what you'd have at home. The third vendor that we would be looking at for next year is Wilson Supply here in Cedar Falls. Again, a lot of miscellaneous utensils and different things, but you can see there's some other equipment as well, some steel cabinets that we placed in the high school. Those are for storage. Stainless steel is sort of a requirement that the public health people would like to see us have when we're storing food. Hot carts or hot cabinets, those are the actual carts. Because we have to transport so much food between our two kitchens and our other satellite areas, we have to have these specialized carts that you plug in, and they can either be hot or cold, by the way. I don't know why they call them hot carts, because you throw the switch, it can be 35 degrees in that cart, too. And so we need a couple of those. We need more refrigeration space at the Holmes, Hanson, and Lincoln, so three more refrigerators. Poofers and holder cabinets, again, those are for the two kitchens, production kitchens. And then we're also asking to replace almost all of our serving trays that the kids to that point now where we, we're recommending that we replace all them. That's not something we do on a, on a annual basis. We're looking at buying about 3,200 trays, to give you an idea.
Can we recycle those? Can we recycle the old trays?
They will, they will, they will keep the ones that are still in good shape yet. As far as recycling them, I'll have to check on that. I can check on that, get back to you. So in summary, we had a total of 73 different line items on this year's bid, and then you can see the breakdown, miscellaneous items is 21,800. The equipment is just over 80,000. And then the trays, which is not, not an every-year type request, just, just under 10,500 for a total of 112,435. Food service will be picking up the vast majority of this. However, they will not be paying for the dishwasher, as Pepple will pick, pick that expense up, as that, that is considered a fixed piece of equipment to the building. And so that's why the Pepple fund would be covering that expense. And with that, I'd answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Doug? Yes.
Couple of questions. First one, none of this is for the new elementary. Is that right? This is all for our existing facilities? And then second question, so the answer on that was no, in case anybody didn't see the, didn't see the heads that were going this way. So no, none of it's for the new elementary. The second question is, obviously, we've done a good job. We get, as Dr. Patie mentioned, this is industrial, commercial-grade equipment. We have equipment from 1963. So the question is, anything that we put in the high school, can we move it to a new high school?
Yes. Everything, with the exception of the dishwasher, everything can be moved. And even part of the dishwasher can be moved, but part of that cost is also the stainless steel trays or table carts that are on each side of that. Those are typically a little more custom, but the main unit itself, if it was properly, if it's the proper size for the new high school, yes, it could be moved.
In this case, that dishwasher is for Pete, so.
Yeah.
But the current dishwasher at the high school.
Yeah, and I was only speaking about the items for the high school.
Right. But, but no, if, at any time, any of the equipment that we purchased tonight could be moved to a different building, and quite often, we will do that. We'll shuffle equipment around from one building to another from year to year as we need to.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
Question.
Susie? Oh, I thought, it looked like you were going to say something. Okay, good. Do I have a motion to approve the food service equipment bid?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item H on the agenda.
And that would be me again, and tonight, we're asking the board to approve an easement with the city of Cedar Falls. This easement is for a stormwater line in association with the work that's about to take place at Orchard Hill. This is the actual drawing that we received from our civil engineer on where the ease, where the storm line's going to go. It's a little hard to read, so I did this. And I thought maybe this would make it a little easier to read. The, you, as obviously, this is Orchard Hill Elementary. The yellow line represents the property line or approximate location of the property line between the district and the city. And you can see the easement request is, and I should have colored that a little different color than what I did, but it's that brown double line on the left, and then what that will do is go down to an existing stormwater line, then that travels to the west, and then ties into the, it ties into the city's system. The city's not asking for any dollars associated with the easement request, just that we obviously repair the ground once, once we dig it back up. You may ask the question, why does the yellow line go through the track? Because it does. The track sits on both city property and school district property. So the easement request has been reviewed by the city. They're very comfortable with it, and like I said, it's no cost to the district other than repairing the, the ground where we put the stormwater line in. And, and so you'll know where that's going from there. There will be a new parking lot north of Orchard Hill, and in that parking lot, in the west end of it, will be a underground stormwater detention tank, as we're required to cover our own runoff. And then that will then tie into the, this stormwater line that'll travel down through the easement request into the main city storm line that'll take it out.
Doug, how long is this going to take? Is there a timeline?
No, there's, as far as the construction or the easement itself.
Just, yeah, no, the construction. It seems like we have a lot going on at Pete in that one area, you know, where they are.
But this is at Orchard Hill.
Is it at Orchard?
No, I know, but I mean, that's taking a long time, so I just wondered how long this.
I don't know that I can answer that. My guess would be that the actual line probably wouldn't be installed till the summer of 2018.
Oh, there you go.
But I don't, but don't hold me to that, because the contractor may work on a different schedule.
Okay.
Obviously, we're not going to let him dig through there while we have kids in the area, but the intent would be that that would be a permanent line running through.
Okay.
So that we can take care of our stormwater issues in the parking lot.
I think the scope of the work that the city's undertaking there just west of Pete would be much more extensive than what this line would be running.
Right.
For Orchard Hill.
Okay.
That's sort of the reverse. They asked us for the easement, now we're asking them for an easement.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the easement on Orchard Hill?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the agreement with the City of Cedar Falls for a perpetual and continual easement for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, and maintaining storm sewer facilities upon a portion of the property of the City of Cedar Falls as presented.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion?
Always positive to work with our city. They always are a great partner in, in everything we do, so we want to thank them for that.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, several different items. Number one, retirement reception. It's always a very exciting evening to recognize and thank our retiring members of the Cedar Falls School District, and that is Wednesday, May 31st, 2017, at 4:15 at Pheasant Ridge. Commencement is May 28th, always an exciting time to really kind of the culmination of all that we do to really say congratulations to our seniors as they walk across the stage. Administrative Board Retreat is June 7th. That starts at 9:30, just for information for, for board members. Certainly something that we want to bring attention to, too, is this is Teacher Appreciation Week. So it's, we know our staff is tremendous and does such an excellent job working with our parents and our students and our community. We want to encourage people to thank our, our staff and teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. Next meeting, we know will be coming up here on May 22nd, and we'll have a lot of different items. That'll be a longer meeting, as we've continued to look at plans and specifications and different components. Now those will be coming back as we have further discussion with the board, as well as some of the baseball field discussion and plans that we've had and really discussed for the last several years as a board as well. I think the, the last item is, again, we want to thank board members for your volunteer service, all the work that you do during Board Appreciation Month. And again, we couldn't do the work that we do without your leadership, without your guidance, and certainly without your focus on students and their achievements. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Adrian, I hate to put you on the spot, but do you know how many retirees we have at this, by this point?
I would have to check the list.
Okay.
It continues to change.
I know it does, yeah.
In the week, so I'd have to get back to you.
Okay, that's okay. Thanks.
My caveat to that would be, we have the best staff in the world, and say that all the time. And every year, we use, we lose some rock stars just because of how many we have and how many great, great teachers we have. We're losing some rock stars again this year.
We really are.
So I'd like to say thank you to, to what they've done, and certainly their dedication to our students across Cedar Falls for decades and generations.
Did you want to say something about the June board meeting time?
Yes, June. We are looking at the June meeting, which I believe is June 8th, to start at 5:30, to start that pilot at 5:30. Looks like that was something that would be potentially beneficial for multiple people, and certainly if that works for all board members, that is something that we can begin in June.
Which day?
June 8th.
That's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday.
I think you mean June 12th.
June 12th. I had my calendar pulled up in front of me. June 12th at 5:30, which would be here at the same spot, different time.
And we only do one meeting in June, correct?
We are looking at a second meeting, just with the timeliness of some projects and some other components, but we will do a doodle for that, and I'll talk with cabinet and then leadership from Joyce and Susie to help clarify that.
But, so, should we leave the 20th? Would you like us to leave the 26th on our calendar?
Um, I don't.
Would that be the easiest?
The 26th is, is probably not. We are looking, if we're just doing approvals of some bids and some bidding processes, a noon meeting to try to get that done as, I guess seamlessly as we can, knowing people's schedules and how difficult it is in June. June 26th, just for multiple reasons, doesn't work for, for a lot of people.
Okay.
We could just call in if we needed to.
Yes, we could.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you for that.
No, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.